Okay, I'm texting everybody to let them know to use, there are two emails and to use the morning link, not the afternoon link. Which Charlie, you obviously got.
Say that again, Deborah.
There are two emails this morning with a Zoom account, a morning and an evening one. You obviously used the morning one.
Apparently so, okay.
And I'm probably gonna hop off in a second to get on my laptop where I have a camera. So Alyssa, I really enjoyed not having a camera.
That way you don't have to dress up.
I just, you know, after like a year of staring at myself, it was like really refreshing when I do these to not have to.
Well, I can guarantee you that I will have my camera off for ninety percent of the meeting, so.
You get to. That is one of your privileges.
Well, it's also, it makes, I think, everybody else a little happier, so.
I'm right over there. When I do the minutes, I go back to my part and just watch it over and over and over and over.
That's your ego stuff, so. Deborah, I did not get an invite to this afternoon. I just got this morning, so I made it easy to click, so.
Okay, good. Charlie, you should just take credit for doing it right.
Yeah, no, there's a reason for that, Charlie.
Yeah, no, I figured. I'm stupid. I can figure, I can screw up anything. I could be waiting till this afternoon for the meeting, so.
Uh, no, actually, it was just, we didn't want you at the afternoon meeting.
Oh, that too. I didn't think about that part. Sorry. That's good. I'll stay home. I'll be home.
Okay, I'm gonna hop off and hop on the other computer.
Is it, is that light perfectly centered?
Uh, it, oh, nice halo. I like it, Jonathan. And it's in focus. Very cool.
It can be. Look, oh, there it is.
Yeah.
That's not, there it is. That's not. I like this. I like casual Fridays.
It's good, it's Thursday.
Thursday already? Jeez.
Yeah, you were thinking it was still last Friday, right, Jonathan? That's kind of the way my world is right now.
No, if it's last Friday, I'd be like thigh deep in powder right now.
Oh. Was that here?
Yeah, I got a, I drove home on Christmas Day because I got kicked out of Iowa because I brought COVID with me. Infected several family members, several friends, ruined about nine Christmases that we, uh, we got the heck out of Dodge, which was great because I avoided a lot of the in-law stuff and I got to ski for a week and like some of the best snow I've ever skied on, so.
Yeah, that's.
COVID was not like the worst thing in the world for me personally. It kind of sucked for all the people I gave it to and ruined their Christmas, but.
You know, Jonathan, that was actually my fault.
You gave me COVID?
No, I didn't. I didn't put a mask order in quick enough, and so I ruined the Christmases of countless people through the country.
Ah, mine included.
Yep.
You know, I, I was, I was, I was going to, I don't like to take staff for the wedge chat a whole lot, but Deborah, I will admit that that was absolutely your fault.
Yep. I got, I got an email, someone blaming me for ruining like their Christmas and everybody else's Christmases that they knew.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. Hey, Shelley, I am sorry I didn't get back to you yesterday. Maybe I can call you after the work session.
Yeah, that would be fine. Just a question. Um, yeah, and it was a late call, so no worries.
Uh, yeah, no, I, um, yeah, I'm still catching up from the holidays.
Yeah, me too. We spent the week after Christmas in lockdown on, with COVID.
Yeah.
Missing the skiing, so there's a lot of catching up to do.
Yeah, no, I am, I'm like Jonathan. I got, because normally I have to work on the days that the snow is good. That's just how it usually works out. So I got, you know, two days in a row last week that were, last week, I can't remember, anyway, whenever that was.
Yeah.
Kids and I got two days in that were just fantastic.
Ah, great. That's good.
Alyssa, could you send out the morning one again? I think Steve's having trouble finding it.
Jonathan, I, I know Tony talked to you, he talked to me yesterday, and I don't know, break up once we get started. He can't be here in the morning, so. I think you and I chatted about that briefly yesterday, but he called me after you and I talked and, um, he can't be here, just can't be, can't make morning meetings, is what he told me, so.
Okay.
Maybe we can talk about that.
Okay, he's saying he's in the, sorry, he's saying he's in the morning meeting, but it's not started.
Is it an old link?
I don't know.
That was, that was a great exasperated tone to start the morning off with, Deborah. That's like, that's like.
That's how my, that's how my, I stuck in something saying the meeting wasn't started.
Maybe tell him the email came in on the thirty-first. That's the link I used. Came in on the thirty-first at nine fifty-five.
Both of the links say eight thirty, so you have to look at the one that doesn't say work session and city council.
We got Steve.
There we go, we got Steve.
You know, has anybody contacted Ingrid?
I texted her, she hasn't texted back yet.
And I did send her the link again just now because she's not, I saw she wasn't on here.
She's probably midway through getting kids out the door, isn't she?
Nah, she does that earlier. That was an hour ago.
And we set this up so that on the morning of a meeting, we just get a link sent to us, just. I, that's the one I used and I got into the, what Steve ended up with, what said the meeting hadn't started.
Oh, that's weird, because I used the same one and got in here.
Get out.
Something's going wrong. It just.
Yeah, and the, and I had, the one I had said the eight thirty AM session, I went into that twice, so.
Yeah, I did the same thing.
You guys that got in just didn't pay attention to what time it said.
Because they're a little less confusing, but I think it's just, hopefully we won't be doing this long enough to get used to it again.
I hope that.
Well, I, my suspicion is that Ingrid probably thought it was nine o'clock, because.
Nah.
Did, what's that, Charlie?
I don't think so. I talked to you yesterday and then.
Okay, well, regardless, we have a quorum. It's eight thirty-six and we've reached out a bunch of different ways, so, um, I guess let's get going. Agenda review.
Hey. So I think it's gonna be a slightly rough start for everybody. Or at least me.
We'll all take responsibility.
Um, so I, I guess if I could just do some kind of bigger picture couple of things, um, you know, assuming that we've made it down into the, to the meat of the agenda, so on, on the redo on BLD, I do, it would be good to get a little direction from you guys this morning, how much you want from either staff or the developer. I mean, essentially, we are resetting. Uh, yeah, that was kind of my thought too, Steve. Resetting right after the motion that failed on the three-three because, and denied the application because of the code. Um, so we could go with nothing and you guys could just pick it up from there if you're all comfortable doing that. Um, you could have, you know, I mean, I need to give a little bit of a lead in, but it would just be like, hey, you know, we got sued, we stepped, this is where we're at. Here's how we're, you know. You, you got, it's up to you guys how you want to move, you know, how you want to deal with this application now.
Hold on a second. I just got a text message from Ingrid. I'm still having civil clerk issues. Someone needs to pull me over. So I don't, Alyssa, can you look at that and see?
Yeah. Sorry, it's been a while. Uh, I see her. I got her.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not administrator.
Um, so anyway, hey, Ingrid.
Sorry.
I, it was just starting with talking about plan, the item number seventeen on the planning file on BLD, just that essentially we're starting as if, you know, it's the next motion after the one that failed on the three-three. Question came up from Chad, called me yesterday to ask if they, you know, if you guys wanted anything from the developer, if you wanted anything, you know, if staff was gonna do a presentation. We had not anticipated doing anything other than, hey, here's what this is and where we're at procedurally, and let you guys take it from there. I don't know if that works for you guys. I would say the one other thing that, um, I need to sort of caution you about is they do have a live application, the same developer for the next parcel over for like a hundred and five townhome units that just got filed. So, uh, we can't really talk about that because it's a live application, but I wanted you guys to be aware that it's out there and I cautioned Chad that if you guys did allow him to speak, but beyond mentioning that they had filed an application, we were not going to have a conversation about that because it's not an application in front of you guys yet. It still needs to go through the process, so. Um, just as by way of background.
Um, so my understanding from our last meeting, Carl, is there wasn't enough clarity from council on that vote, so do we need to each make a statement of why we're voting prior to the vote? Because I don't want this to come back again on whichever way the vote goes, saying, well, they didn't understand why.
No, so, I mean, really what happened is because of the code, right, you guys voted three-three, it was on a motion to approve, right? So the code, um, as it exists, which is why we're changing it, says that if that motion fails, it's a denial. So there were literally no, um, findings supporting the motion for the denial. In the same way, there would be findings, there were findings adopted on the motion to approve, but it's, do you see what I'm saying? So there was no basis in the record for the denial other than it was a tie vote, right?
I, I don't really understand that because we did make statements regarding why we were voting the way we were.
Did, but the, it, it wasn't, the denial wasn't, the denial wasn't by four-three. The denial was because the code said that on a tie vote, it's a denial, right? Um, so I think really all we're looking for tonight is a new motion that could be a motion to deny, to approve, to whatever, while there is seven of you, and so we will have um, a, a motion that will ultimately win, either to approve or deny. And my hope is, is that that motion has clear findings adopted with it, and yes, I would like a list of findings with that motion behind the motion, whether it's the one in the packet or it's one of your own, um, on say a motion to deny, um, a clear set of findings of these are the specific reasons related to the code that I am moving to deny this application.
And if somebody moves to approve it, we still have the same problem then if it's, it goes, if it's denied, if it fails.
Well, we don't because you can just make another motion, right? At that point, if the motion to approve fails three-four, then somebody should make a motion to deny that would be approved for three. Right? So we, we have seven, seven counselors will be available tonight, and so we will not have a tie vote. So that's the big difference.
Confusing. I need to be a lawyer.
I wouldn't understand it either.
Well, I think that what Carl just said that most resonates with me is the idea that we're kind of pretending time has not existed from the tide three-three until this evening, and ultimately, it's almost as though Steve is gonna step into the room and we're gonna make another motion.
I get that whole part. I just don't get the part about we, we're not really clarifying to them, whereas what I understood in our last meeting is they didn't understand why it was denied, so now we have to vote again. That, that's the gist of what I walked away with, and apparently that's not the gist of what it is. It's just they want seven people voting on it.
No, it's not what they, frankly, it's not what they want. It's that we don't have a defensible decision on a three-three vote, right? That's really what, and, and I have to acknowledge that because of the way that works, we didn't have a clear record of findings as to why it failed. Other, the, the real reason it failed was not because a majority of council voted that way. It was because the code said that the application was denied on a tie vote. And, and that's, then that's, we can resolve that with seven people in the room, and then the next item is trying to resolve that in terms of how we deal with those votes and what happens in the future, so.
Okay.
Delve, then Charlie, then Steve.
I think based on this conversation, I don't really have a lot of further comment. I was just gonna say, um, it would be my preference not to have a lot of debate again. We all said our piece. Uh, maybe Steve has something to say, but besides that, um, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Shelley. Charlie?
Two things, Carl. First on, um, I sent out an email I got yesterday. I don't know if it went to everybody, but I got it and I sent it up to staff so it could be distributed, not to other council members. And then I think we all got a common, one or two common emails on this project over the last week. Um, I have not read those, um, and it would seem to me to be unfair to read those, not allow them to comment. Um, I don't care if anyone else wants to say they read or didn't read, that's up to them. I just felt that it, it's quasi judicial, and I can take everything at the meeting, so I didn't look at those.
Yeah, I would say that the public hearing is still closed, so you're really making this decision based on what you heard at the last meeting.
So maybe it'd be helpful if you say that we've reached, certain council members received emails and they're not being considered in the vote. You don't say whether they read or not, just say they're not considered in the vote.
Right, no, and I, I will queue us up as to where we're at, and what's going on, and I will probably also, and if I don't, Steve, um, I need to make sure that we have an acknowledgement on the record that Steve has reviewed the whole meeting related to this item.
Right. The other question, hey, Carl, so I sent you some, some thoughts on the language for the, the charter or the code that I thought made it a little clearer than maybe it was, but did you get a chance to look at that?
Um, I will before tonight. Okay. I, I didn't really look at them, honestly, Charlie, yet.
I just want to make sure you had a chance to see it before tonight, so. And if you have thoughts, send it out or not ahead of time, it's up to you. Just some ideas I had, I thought many, then there's still some, I thought, ambiguous language in there, so. I mean, I'm thinking, that's all I think.
Um, Steve, I saw your hand up, but you lowered it. I guess.
Yeah, I agree, Carl. I had just, uh, I had contemplated getting my hand up and making the statement that, uh, I did sit through that entire meeting on Zoom and, and watched every minute of it, and so feel like I am well-versed on that, unfortunately. And I could have voted had we had some electronic way of doing that, uh, that night. Uh, it seems very appropriate. Item eighteen cleans up this issue of a majority vote on a land use issue, and, you know, I, I think with, as you, uh, set this up for item seventeen, it seems like that'd be an appropriate time to kind of talk about that, uh, item eighteen as well, leading into this, just so everybody has a better understanding of what went wrong and how we're gonna fix it, so.
Okay, will do.
So Steve, are you suggesting we flip those two items?
Uh, no, not necessarily. It's just, you know, Carl's gonna tee it up and, and item eighteen does fix the issue that we had of, uh, that would require a majority to pass or fail a, uh, something of nature. Uh, I don't know which way they go, but.
Okay, I, I will do that, and hopefully that'll save time on eighteen as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, Steve, somebody made a, the comment that we've all, I think Paula did, made the comment that we've all had an opportunity to, you know, express our, you know, thoughts, our findings, how this relates to code, except you. Do you, I, I think it, I agree with Shelley that we shouldn't, we shouldn't rehash this. Um, the, the public hearing's closed, council comments are closed. However, I think it might be appropriate, if you want, you don't have to at all, but if you would want to talk about why you'd see and why you're gonna be voting a certain way, I think that'd be the only person that I would care to hear. Not, not care to hear from, I want to hear from everybody, but, uh, that it'd be appropriate.
No, I think that would be part of, of, um, my brief comments, uh, you know, being one of many words as I am. Uh, but I would expect to say, uh, you know, kind of how I stand on that before, uh, before we make a motion or take a vote on that, so.
Okay.
You're looking for consensus, Jonathan. I agree a hundred percent also on that. We don't need to reiterate what we've already said.
Okay.
Can I, what I issue, Jen, if I can, just in, in this, I talked about it briefly, but some of you were already on, so I apologize for repeating, but, um, I mean, talked to Tony Hershey, may have talked to others of you yesterday. He is, is positioned with his job right now as a short-staffed and people for COVID. He's gotta be in court. And basically what he told me is he could not, um, hold on a second, um, he cannot, um, attend morning meetings, just, it doesn't work within his work schedule. Um, even though I think that, I mean, agree or disagree, I think it's important that all of us, we make an effort, that all of us be a president at those meetings, and, and so I, although we agreed we were trying to do this the first meeting of each month, I think we ought to revisit that, given Tony's basically out of position. He's not gonna show up at morning work sessions, so I, I want to raise that issue. I, I think this is a good time to talk about it, but if you think some later done, it's up to you, so.
I think whatever you guys decide, I would love it if you did it at an evening meeting where there could be a vote because I got into a discussion with Council Hershey on this, that he didn't remember you guys telling me to do this. And so whenever we're making any schedule changes, I know it's a pain, but I think I need a motion and a vote.
No, that's fine, Deborah. I appreciate that. I just wanted to bring it up so we could talk about it now, and if we're all okay with where it is, um, maybe we just reiterate it, but if we think that, go back, have late afternoon meetings, or, you know, my view is we, we don't have enough time in those, that's what I mentioned last time about this. I would be, then my preference would be to go find a third evening during the month that we have just work sessions and maybe move from four to eight or something, so it's not consuming.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, but it feels like we're having the conversation about it. I think we're gonna have a future conversation on the dice, uh, about what we all feel and when we want to do it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Paula.
Um, not to, I just need to go back to that last issue real quick. If somebody had changed the reason, change, or changing their vote, will they have an opportunity to speak prior to the vote on that issue? And I'm not saying I'm changing or not changing, I'm just saying if somebody had that, do we need that clarity? For, I'm still back on the clarity thing, sorry, Carl, but I just wanted to.
It's fine. I mean, I, I, I think that's fine. I mean, I guess really what, um, you know, where I, and, and the reason, you know, it's kind of funny that this came up in the sequence that it did, because we talked about having more discussion before the motion at the last meeting, um, then had that, and then had ran into this issue. What I'd really prefer is if you, um, have short comments related to the motion and your position that those come in, you know, we have a motion, we have a second, Jonathan says, is there any further discussion on this? And at that point, have those comments raised, because then it is abundantly clear that it relates to the motion and the decision being made at that time, right? Like, that's, that's why I'm, I, you know, why I like it that way, and it, start contrast, just.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks. I'm sorry. I just like, okay, I need clarity. I'm making sure we're clear. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's, that's important. We already got sued once on this. I think those are great questions. Go ahead, Ingrid.
I am curious if when we have our dialogue on work sessions and timing, which obviously we need to do, and I agree we should do it where there's an official vote, can we also get feedback from staff on how easy it would be to record work sessions? Um, in the world of four threes, it might give staff clarity to be able to bounce back to that item. Um, go ahead, Deborah.
I'd say that works for me if we can make it a meeting and you guys take a vote.
Okay.
I have to go back to trying to interpret what you all told me you felt, it doesn't work well.
Okay, so let's have that be integrated into the work session dialogue.
And I know we might have to change, do we have to change the code then, Carl?
Um, I, we can work around it for right now, but we might have to. Let's just see where we go and then we'll go.
Yeah, okay. And want me to make this an agenda item at the next evening meeting?
Yeah, let's just ensure that all seven of us are gonna be available. I know we have some vacations coming up for people. Um, Paul and I both have something going on in February, so let's just ensure that all seven members are there so that all seven are able to vote.
Okay.
And if that means we delay, um, we delay.
I think all of you are here, as far as I know, all of you are planning to be a part of the second meeting in January.
Yeah, I think, but it makes that agenda, I'm, Deborah, the other thing, I thought it was gonna raise this, it actually reminded me of a question you made yesterday, and that is, tell us, you know, what works for staff, third night of the month, um, or mornings or more afternoons? What's easier for staff? They have families and lives. I know, you know, but the staff has lives outside of council, so.
I will ask them, and then this way I can have a written response for you guys.
Okay, thanks.
You know, real quick, and Shelley's hand was up, but I, I would just say, I, I think we can do this during council comments tonight and take a vote. We, we had this conversation. We spent a half hour. Council Hershey was there. Everybody has different preferences, but we talked, we've talked about this over three or four different meetings over the last six months, kind of ad nauseam. I, I, I don't, like, if, if, if people want to have another agenda item, but, but I feel like we had pretty good uh, a conversation and a general direction at that work session where we were all there, so if people really wanted to be on another agenda as agenda items, otherwise I'll just bring it up during council comments. We can take a vote at that point when we're all there and there's all seven of us this evening, uh, but I, I would defer to you guys.
Well, Deborah, would you be able to get staff feedback on best timing in, in today?
I think so.
Okay.
Any, any thoughts on just bringing it up and taking a, a quick vote that affirms our earlier decision or reopening it and having it as an agenda item at the next, uh, meeting?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So if I, if I forget, Deborah, will you poke me digitally?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, jumping to the next thing, the annexation petition. So underneath the charter, item nineteen, you have two decisions essentially to make, which is why it's structured the way it is. Um, the petition is bound to be sufficient by the clerk. That's the clerk's job. Um, under the charter, your job is to decide either, one, to repeal the ordinance, um, and effectively undoing the annexation decision, or two, setting it for an election. Um, there's no, there's no third options. There's no, I mean, it's an A or a B, and that's why we have it structured that way. Um, I do have both of those. I, I suppose you could just pick one and go with that, but um, I, it, it may be important to the public that you, um, clearly state that, you know, if you're repealing, you're repealing. Um, if you're not repealing, you're not repealing, and then move on to the setting it for an election if you don't repeal. Um, I, you know, the, the charter doesn't make this a public hearing. It doesn't make it anything. It just says the council, you know, is left with these two options. I think it's up to you guys if you take any public comment on this. If you do, it is narrowly focused on, do you repeal or set it for an election, right? I mean, it, it really, it's not sort of rehashing the land use decision. It's, it's just those two items. That's your decision-making box. Um, and so I, I'm hopeful that this is really pretty straightforward for you guys. Um, other than the potential for what you do with public comment on, it, it shouldn't take you that long, right? Like, because you, you just don't have a lot of choices.
Well, so Carl, are you looking for two different motions?
I, I think so. I think it's important, um, for you to, to, um, vote on repeal, because I think the public would like to see you. I, I mean, obviously there's a contingent of the public that would like to see a repeal, and so I think for clarity for them, I think it's important to vote on that. If you vote not to repeal, then you do need to, um, vote affirmatively on resolution two that sets it for that special election we already have set.
Paula?
I think you answered my question, Carl. So we have to vote affirmatively on the second if we vote no on the first.
You do.
We don't have a choice. We're gonna vote, but it has to be.
Right. It has to be affirmed, because the charter says you, you do one or the other.
Okay, thanks.
And Carl, were you planning on talking about how our charter interrelates? Because if, if we set this for, if we refer this to a special election, from my understanding, having talked with you and Ryan, it has to be on May third. Is that correct?
It does.
We don't have to talk about it now, but, but maybe this evening.
Yeah, no, and I can't, because we already have that election set. The way the charter reads, it has to be set on the same. The way the charter reads, it has to be set on the same, you know, if we have an election set, it has to go on that.
Okay.
And you don't have any language for the motions in the, uh, packet here, you care?
No, it'd just be a, a motion to, um.
Simple.
Yeah, to, you know, a motion not to repeal ordinance twenty twenty-one, oh, zero eight, or a motion to repeal. Um, i- if you don't repeal, then the motion would simply be a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two, zero, two.
Okay.
Go ahead, Shelley.
Oh, I, I just have a question on. Options on those motions, um. Is there? Do we repeal the whole annexation?
Yep.
Can we repeal just the zoning?
Nope.
Or is it, okay, so it's repealing the whole thing?
Yeah, it's the annexation. That's, that's your only choice, because that's the petition that was submitted was the annexation ordinance. So. Um, and if it's repealed by operation of law, the zoning goes away too, because it's not part of the city, right?
Right, right.
So.
Okay.
Any other questions on, yeah, Ingrid?
So say that someone maybe, um, this is just a, for instance, I'm using myself as an example. Say that someone voted to deny it. Um, however, they don't actually want to repeal the ordinance. What they would prefer to do is just allow it to go to vote. Um, that's not a contradiction because they're too.
Absolutely. And that was the other reason I broke it up is to allow that flexibility, because I think for some of you guys. You want to, and I think, you know, Tony, who's not here, he may fall into that category too, because he really likes the process. Um, that while he didn't agree with the annexation, he would let, you know, it. Providing the opportunity for the public to speak is the right call. For, maybe the right call for him or.
Oh, I was using him all this time. I was using him as an example.
Right, no, I, but I think that's fair, and I think, um, and, and I do think that may be worthwhile for you guys to make a short comment about if. Going to vote a different way, so people understand.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else on item nineteen?
Um, all right, item twenty, and then I'll stop talking. Um, this really is adopting by reference to Fair Campaigns Practices Act. Um, it, it's, it's maybe the most boring ordinance known to humankind, but. Um, you will note, um, in the last election, we had, um, some funding of campaign funding or of issue committees. Um, there were some questions from especially the paper about how come we weren't enforcing, why was there no transparency? And really, even though they're supposed to abide by those state rules, we didn't have any teeth in the, in the local code. And, and this has just been kind of an evolution. The Secretary of State stopped handling municipal election issues. Um, from an enforcement standpoint, um, a few years ago. It really hasn't been an issue for most communities, and so most communities have not adopted anything. Um, i- in all honesty, as particularly smaller communities, and we definitely have run into. Um, there's a lot more interest, and you will have noted that, and especially school board races recently, there's a lot of interest in local. Um, local races now and local issues. Um, so this just gives us the tools, um, to deal with that. The question I will ask you tonight, we arbitrarily threw in the number of $400 on a, on a campaign limit. Um, I don't know if that's the right number or the wrong number, it's, um, just in the last, in the twenty twenty election cycle, that was the, the limit for like state house races. Um, I think that went up to six twenty-five this year, so that's a number that you guys, I, I have no attachment to it, we just needed to fill in a number on. On contribution limits, um, just had a similar ordinance passed over in Silverthorne last night, and they picked five hundred for whatever that's worth. Um, the lowest I've seen is a hundred, um, which is Avon, and in some jurisdictions, it's like twenty-five hundred. Um, so kind of whatever feels right to you guys.
Okay, uh, so Charlie?
Yeah, cause it's a quick question, that you said that it, this year it's gone up to six twenty-five, I think is what you just said. Uh, is that, that float on, on, uh, cost of living, or does that change every year, or is that?
Uh, no, it, I think it was a legislative change.
Okay, so it's not an automatic change.
No, it's not, it's nothing we could tie to necessarily.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Um.
And I'm done.
Great. Um, not great. Uh, so the other part of the gender review and, and the, uh, future agenda plan was included in this, and I know Shelley, you had. Some ki- kind of questions, global questions about priorities and timing, and, and maybe Debbie can talk about how you kind of slotted things in. Do we want to get into that conversation now? Um, and if not now, when, I guess?
If we do, I, I need to look at that whole thing again, it's continuously in motion, but. When I had sent out the list to you guys, I was just thinking like a month or two, give me guidance, not that we were picking council priorities. But we can pick council priorities, we just need to go through a process, you know, it's been two years. You know, if it's something council wants to do, I can, you know, we can set it up, we can get a facilitator. I would like, you know. Two or three months to get that going, right, where we just kind of go along, because it'll just take time, and I don't want to do it virtually.
I'll, I'll just jump, I see a lot of hands, but I, I, I guess I would just say for at least the next month. We should have that conversation now, and then if we want to do the bigger stuff and facilitator, all that good stuff, great, but. Um, my, my question is, one, we have for our next meeting, a core conversation with the Post Independent that was primarily driven by a publisher who's no longer there, so.
Yeah, I was, I took that out in my mind already.
Great, um, so maybe if people are okay with taking that out as well, I don't want to necessarily drive it. But two, if we could replace that with a work session on building codes, because we have it on the agenda for February third. And kind of in the vein of let's not have things that are complicated, potentially or controversial hit an agenda without us having a work session. If we could have a work session on the twenty twenty-one building codes on January twentieth. So that we can then take, potentially be in a position, take action on it on the February third meeting. That would be my only comment or preference for the next thirty days.
That is the plan, but it's not the plan to have you take action on it on February third, it's too complicated. So don't, what you're looking at now is not anything I did, it just got put on, rolled over from the last time, because I was on vacation.
And I like it, I mean, I like this, I like being able to see it, but. If, if we should just completely disregard it, then can we bring it back in, in a more productive way? Soon, because it's helpful, I think it's good.
I think my only question is, is, you know, do you guys want to give me guidance on the next two months? Which we can do that again with a small process, and then do you want to look at a bigger council goals process? Because what I got was just when I sent it out was frustration, because you want, most of you want to have the bigger goals conversation, or at least. Two or three of you do, so it didn't work, like it failed on my part. So. That is what I need, is do you want to help me a little bit now while we plan a bigger council discussion later?
Shelley. And then Paula.
Yes, that's what I would like to see, because when you sent out the work sessions. There were things on there that I thought are just either not priorities, or I didn't know where they came from. So I'd, I'd like to have a conversation with all of council and at least set. Set our high priorities for the next two years. And, you know, specifically for this year, and I think that helps in a lot of ways. One thing. Maybe it helps you to have a list to go back to and say, this was your priority, so that when we come up with new big projects, you can say, you know. This is what we're doing now, let's push this next one to twenty twenty-three or something like that. I think it helps everybody in that way. So I'd like to see us do that. On the building code thing, I don't want to get too specific on that, but. I'm, I'm to the point now where I almost want to propose a moratorium on building permits until we get those codes adopted. So I don't know how quickly we can get them on the books. But I feel like we have so much construction going on right now, and it's, if we're building to two thousand and nine codes. That's thirteen years behind the current technology, and we're building outdated product that we're going to have to live with for seventy-five years. So, um, that's just where I'm at with it. I'd really like to see that get adopted urgently.
Um. Okay. Paul, sorry, sorry.
I'm probably in your lower left-hand screen or something in that very obscure place. Um, on the agenda items, Deborah, I'm sorry, and I seem to be doing this a lot every, uh, every time an issue comes up, but I didn't. Understand that you were looking for priorities for every two months. I really like that idea, if that's what I was, I was just kind of ranking, here's my top priorities. Um, and I like the idea of doing that every couple of months. And in reference to that, back to Shelley saying, yeah, it's great to have this big picture priority goals, but things change. So I would hate to say in February, we told you these are our priorities for the next two years. In June, something big happens, and so those priorities switch, so that every couple of months of just giving you a vote real quick of. Can you consider these as our top items? I think would add some clarity and some direction from all of council on things we'd like to see come up pretty quickly. I don't know if that's too difficult for you, I just thought, I, if I knew it had been, it just, what we, what did we want for the next two months, that would have changed how I looked at it, so. Trying to provide help to you, if you have something along that line that we could work with, that'd be great. Um, and, um, I'm seconding Shelley's comments on the building code, I, I do think we need to move forward into twenty twenty-two. So however you want to respond to that, Deborah, I just want to say now I have more clarity and I'm really trying to pay attention.
You know, I have no problem every couple of months sending you out what the, because I mean, it is my intent to have the work session planned, you know, if it's not Christmas and. Everything else isn't going on, on the agenda every time, right? If you guys accept that it's fluid and can change, and you don't get too attached to anything. Um, as long as we keep it a very simple process, if I get pages and pages of backup. This is my feelings on everything, and we need to do everything right now. That doesn't help me.
Right.
So if we can keep it simple, yes. And then we can do the bigger, I'm totally good with doing the bigger process, you know, two or three months from now where we look at it. And still, obviously, if something big happens and changes, we change, right? Like, we've been continuously changing like every two or three months over the last two years, so we can do that.
Right, right. I, I just, I guess was referencing back to, oh, well, that was what you guys said is your priorities, and I'm not directing that as you saying that, but I'm just saying. Having that flexibility, and I'm glad to acknowledge that. Um, if, um. And I think on the ranking thing, I think that clarity from you on just look, just tell me what your top, you know. Three things or five things are from each council member, so that you get some gist of how we're feeling about things. For a couple of months, that'd be great.
And I'm just trying, just so you know, with that, like this little exercise, I'm just trying to. Decrease frustration, because what I was getting from council is like, we want to do all of these things right now. We're frustrated that there's not enough time to talk about them, so I was just looking for some guidance on. You know, immediate, what do you want to talk about sooner rather than later? Not that everything else would go away.
I understand. Thank you.
I, I think the larger conversation, I wouldn't say two years, because two years goes past the next election, so I would say. We take it until the next election, which is essentially a year and a half from now, or fifteen months from now, I think that that's a great goal. Uh, period for us. Anything after a, really a year, probably, we have so much stuff, I mean. That, that comes at us that it, it probably loses its effectiveness, but I do think at every meeting. Um, we just take five minutes to look at the next two. Maybe three meetings and affirm that this is how, that we all affirm this is what we want addressed, so that there's no. Um, and, and, and not, you know, to, to single the actually, but like, a moratorium is a pretty large discussion because of a frustration that we're not addressing this, so. If, if something's not coming in the next three meetings, like that's when I think, I mean, appropriately you need to say, like, I'm ready for a moratorium in conversation about this, so we can go, whoa, whoa, okay. That's a big deal, let's make this a high priority. So I, I think if we do that very briefly at every one of these agenda meetings and just look out. No farther than two, maybe three meetings, I think that would be really helpful, but make it just a really quick check-in kind of thing. Charlie?
Um, yeah, sorry, I forgot one other issue out that when I talked to Tony last night, he doesn't want to bring before the council a code of conduct. Um, probably the rest of the conversation is probably, it's more personal, but, um. Is it council's view that we should discuss or talk about the code of conduct, or should we just pull that?
I mean, it would be my preference that if Tony has these comments, that he send them to Deborah to distribute to all of council, or that he tell us during council comments directly. Um, but we've been talking about this code of conduct since that predates you, Ingrid. Or Tony, or Paula. I mean, this first came up, I think Shelley, you brought it up from a retreat you did in Littleton three years ago, so. We've talked about it, we've taken action on it in various ways over three years, it's not my, um. It's not my predilection, because somebody doesn't want to talk about it, um. If there's just one person that doesn't want to take action on it, then, then I'm, I think we should go forward. He'll be there this evening to talk about it, and he can make a motion to table it.
I'm just raising an issue that he raised, so that, you know, I feel fairness, since he can't be here, I should raise that issue, because we're talking about the agenda.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay.
I'm getting, I need to look at it again. I will send it back out to you guys, it'll be updated in the next agenda packet, we'll be doing the first work session on. Building code issues. I just want you all to understand that there will be feelings about the building code. And if you rush it, you will also get a negative reaction. So we want to do it, we want to do it fairly quickly, but we're not going to ask you to approve it at the very next meeting.
Ever, should we? Let people know we're going to have a public hearing on those, so that people can get prepared, because I think, I, I agree with you, I don't think we want to do without input from the building community, who I assume is.
Yeah, we're, we're doing that.
Doing that.
Okay, alright.
And we have.
But I agree with Shelley, I think we need to get those updated, so I, that I think is, I hear is a priority, both of these three of us, so.
Okay, uh, anything else for the agenda for this evening? Or future agendas? Okay, uh, airport listening session, agenda review.
Okay, and I think. Um. I wasn't here when you guys talked about this, I know. There are a couple of issues going on, is we went all virtual, we had asked Dave Merritt to help us. Run the meeting, he is not thrilled to run a all virtual meeting. And there's like some disagreement about what the purpose of this is. I think there's some, you know, you guys want different things out of this, and what we were planning is not what some of you wanted, and it didn't have good direction. So I guess number one is, do we still want to do it on the nineteenth, if it's virtual? And really, what do you want out of it when we do it?
I guess I would say that. Virtual's tough, so I'd love to have everybody's kind of feedback and, and Deborah or Alyssa, if there's a way to do it virtually. That would be productive, I would be very interested to hear that. I think at least the direction that council gave, uh, from, I looked back and, and looked at the, um. The video of it, uh, but that after the vote failed in November, we took a vote, and that vote was that we would have two listening sessions. Or, uh, feedback sessions on the airport property and all the uses that that would entail. And so that was a, a, a vote of this council, I don't know if it is, I think it was, I think it's seven zero, um, I don't remember the vote, but that was the last official direction we got, so if we're going to do. Something different than that, we probably need to take, again, go back and take a vote. On the dais about what it's going to be, but.
Uh, because what I got after that was in a work session and not official, and you all thought you told me something different.
Right, and so I think it's a good thing to have that conversation now, but we do need to take a vote if we're going to change that direction that was from November. Um, but I think the larger question I would have is technologically, do we think? That'll be productive in a virtual world, because, uh, at least from the public health standpoint, when I say public health, I'm talking, pointing over there at my wife's desk. She thinks that this is going to peak, um, late January, uh, this surge of COVID, so I think it would be tough. To plan an in-person meeting. Anytime before February, and I think even early February might be a little bit dicey, and that's not official word from public health, that's just unofficial word from what I hear. Go ahead, Paula.
Um, I'd prefer in-person meetings, but my understanding was it was more of a. Uh, not so much as directing a session, but, um. More like people being able to provide comments, not in to the whole thing, more along the lines of the parking. And, uh, oh, uh, South Canyon kind of sessions, I think that's worth a discussion, and I think if we. I think that's worth a discussion and I think if we move, stay, uh, stay in person, which I would prefer that we move it back, uh, until mid-February to mid-March. Uh, there's no reason to jump on this and do this like immediately. And I'd rather get good feedback from the community and, and an understanding of the broader community and how they feel about the airport.
Charlie, thanks, Paul. Charlie?
Oh, I, I saw you took down my hand. If you called it, yeah, I missed. Um, yeah, just a couple of things. One is I, is something you know, because I talked to you about this. Um, the, I spent some time in the, during the month of December, uh, talking to various people about the perception constantly dysfunctional and of course in that the airport came up. Um, and so I have talked to people about the airport in what may, my view of what may be going on in the future there and, and my views on that. I'll just leave it that. I've also talked to people about South Bridge funding, which is tied into that in my view because, you know, if, if we can fund the, the project and titles there, to me, we had enough other problems going on with our, of the view the public has of us that we don't need to be doing anything with the airport. But that's just my personal view and I'm not asking to get into that discussion today, but I felt I needed to let you all know. I've been talking to people both about the airport and about funding for South Bridge. So, um, like it's important to understand what I'm doing, you know, in between meetings, so in my view, so thanks. Oh, and I support virtual, sorry.
You support going, doing a virtual.
In person, in person, right? It's the old brain. I, I did that backwards, in person.
Okay, I about fell off this chair. Uh, Shelley and Ingrid.
I agree with a lot of what Paula said. I also, um, would like to see us do it in person. I think it's important that people can show up either at the community center or wherever we host it and that they have boards, they can put little stickies on and just give comments. I think it's, um, not so much about leading a session. We don't want to give the impression that the city is, you know, planning some future change in, in huge things to the airport. I think it needs to be just a very open and honest. You know, this is what we're looking at as far as South Bridge goes, tunnel versus moving the runway. I think people need to be made aware of that and a lot of them aren't. So the ones that will show up, it'd be nice if they could see that on boards and see things that might affect them, especially in their neighborhoods. And in that, in that view, the idea of having two, and again, having one down specifically in South Glenwood where they're most affected by the airport, I think would be important to do if we can. Um, but otherwise, yeah, I don't think virtual will get us what we want. But I think it's important just to allow people to kind of openly give their opinion on a blank slate, you know, what the airport might be in 20 years, you know, and I guess my vision on that is just to have a outline of the airport property. Maybe we show the helipad as there kind of permanently. Um, and, and, you know, as a final board or something that they can comment on, just say, you know, what's your vision? 20 years from now, the long-term use of the airport.
Thanks, Shelley. Ingrid, then Charlie.
I think for me, I, once again, I feel like we're getting bogged down in the weeds of what we're gonna do and what's important for us to say or educate, which I think is important. But ultimately inherent in the name, this is a listening session. So this is for us to hear what the community feels like and where they're at with it. Um, those kinds of things are done best done in person. I think that the South Canyon opportunity, a couple of these different times where we have had community members show up and, and granted, I understand that inherently we find many times those who are the most passionate and it doesn't always reflect the entirety of the community. But nonetheless, it's still an opportunity for them to be heard. And then going one step further up is the goal in this. My understanding is that so council can get some guidance on where we go with this as well, which the timeliness of that, um, it's not as though we have to make a decision in the next four weeks on anything. So why don't we push it out so we can do it in person and make sure that we all remember that we're there to listen? And I think that's the most important thing for us, um, to our takeaway. So let's all be available and let's all have our listening ears on and not our talking hat on.
Just so you guys know, we were hoping to bring back, because we're trying to keep designing South Bridge going, right? So we were hoping to bring back on the 20th, the, you know, tunnel, no tunnel, shifting the airport runway, not shit on the 20th. I understand you probably want to have this session first before you make that decision. So, but just understand if we do that, that we're just delaying everything and it makes it more difficult, right? Like the longer we delay the contract design, it just gets a little more difficult. Not saying that waiting isn't the right idea. I'm just trying to make sure you understand the repercussions of these decisions.
Well, I understand the repercussions, but I also understand that yet again, we're going virtual because of an unexpected act of God issue of, of a pandemic. So let's be malleable, even with our decisions that are upcoming. And if we need to push those out, we will all adjust accordingly.
And I think what Terry is telling me, and if she's on, we can pull her over and she could probably do a better job explaining it, is that, um, we're delaying the EA reevaluation and right away based on this decision and she can ask for a second reevaluation, right?
So and how long can, I mean, are we talking, if, if there is a delay, we're talking, we're talking potentially weeks, right? We're not talking six months.
Well, and I need, is Terry on as a participant? Can we pull her over? She's obviously watching it because she's sending me texts.
I see her, yeah.
Well, she can explain it much better than I can.
While we're pulling her over, let me just say real quick, um, I, I think having it in person is great. I would like, we, I, I've, I've gotten feedback and by feedback, I got a email from someone who is really, who felt we pulled the rug out from underneath them when we postponed the listening sessions in November and postponed it to here. So just understand, I think there's, there's a lot of people in the community that want to have this conversation that are going to be frustrated when we move again. I think everybody understands it's, it's COVID, it's better in person. So I, I don't think that that's a problem. But to keep things rolling, I think we probably want, at, at least my opinion would be if we need to schedule it in early February and hope, and if we don't, then we, we're able to reschedule it. Just, just as far as timing, because to Ingrid's point, that's like a two-week delay, maybe a three-week if we want to go to like mid-February versus like a three-month delay. Go, go ahead, Terry.
Um, so you know, I agree overall that, um, you know, this airport listening session is bound to be emotional and I think it would probably be better to do in person. Um, I would say though, that, you know, we've got a list of items that we need to do a reevaluation on the EA um, for South Bridge. Um, we have been waiting for this, this idea of tunnel, no tunnel or, um, a runway shift to the north, um, just to add to, to that list and try to get it all done in one reeval. Um, and to, you know, if we were to do any one, either one of those things, tunnel, no tunnel, shift to the north, it does take a little bit more effort. Um, the thing that really concerns me about the EA reeval is that, um, we're waiting for a final set of right away plans um, to be done or a right away approval to be done after the EA reeval. So I'm, I'm, my right, my right away process is being delayed. What I can do is, um, perhaps go ahead and do the reeval on the issues that we have. Um, and, um, and then go ahead and, and try to get CDOT to authorize the, um, the right away process to begin based on, you know, the reeval that we have. It's just additional money, right? We're probably gonna have to do, then we may have to do a second, uh, reeval on the project based on any decision that you guys make, whether it's tunnel, no tunnel or shift from the runway to the north. Um, it would be just additional, um, you know, dollars to the contract to, to do that again. Um, so it, it maybe it's, it, it might very well be worth it. Given that, that the airport is such a contentious issue. So I, my only issue, like I said, is, is really getting started on that right away process. We just, you know, come up against barrier after barrier and it is an 18-month process. And, um, I'm just, you know, desperately trying to push it forward.
Charlie, then Paula. Thanks, Terry.
Of course.
I just, I wanted to add, and, you know, somebody mentioned earlier, I can, I'll just cover who mentions about having a meeting, um, both maybe at the community center and then one at the, uh, so for Sullivanry. And I want to remind people, I wasn't at the meeting because I was running for election at the time and I think I was out of town. That happened endeavor was, was not physically attacked, but certainly verbally attacked that meeting. So we set up the process for this. I want to make sure that we remove staff in that process as much as possible. Um, that's our job. We're the elected officials, um, whether we get a facilitator, whether we, uh, Mr. Mayor, you do it or I do it or somebody does it. I think we need to not have staff be leading that. And Dave can do it. He's willing to do it. I think it's a great idea. He's got credibility on both sides of the issue with my view. So that was one comment. The second I'm gonna make, uh, what Terry just said is, and all, Terry, I appreciate your, your comments, but if we can, I'm just looking in, in, in the February, my February calendar and I, we need to do this with Tony online, make sure I got a good date. Let's set a date that are, during the meeting this evening for the new listening session. And, and if we look at like the week of the 10th, which is not a council week, maybe do it that week. And so we're, we're three weeks back and I know it's slow starting down, but I would rather not spend the money to do the EA twice.
I agree with that. Thanks, Charlie. Um.
We're just picking a date tonight. You gotta understand, like, I need to find a facilitator that needs to work with their two, them two.
And real quick, before Paula jumps on, I, I would say that it is actually really important that staff, I totally echo your position, Charlie, but I think it's really important to have somebody completely neutral. So I think we talked about like Michael doing this. And so I was kind of surprised when, when Dave Merritt was doing it. But I don't think necessarily, with all due respect to Dave, uh, you know, I think he did a great job, but I don't think he's viewed as a neutral party.
It wasn't that, it was, I was trying to find a figure that could introduce topics without getting screamed at. And I figured Dave would have enough respect with the airport community that he could do that, right? So we, if we do think if you want to talk about the future of the airport, it will be very contentious and I needed someone to help me.
And, and I would say that you're going to get people from my neighborhood, they're going to be very emotional about a runway realignment that's going to bring a runway closer to neighborhoods and taking out 300 trees. So I don't think we're going to be able to get around the fact that this could be contentious. And I, I think an outside facilitator is, at, at least in my opinion, the best way to protect. I, I, I want nothing to do.
Having both, Jonathan.
Great, great. Okay, Paula.
Um, well, on that note, um, again, I am hoping this is not a active discussion that we're having with the whole group for this listening session, but it's an opportunity for people to post comments about how they feel about certain things. I think if we make it an inner, if we make it an exchange and an announcement and talking about what's going on, we're going to get into that, um, loud voices. So I'm really hoping that it's one-on-one discussions with council members. On that note, I, um, I'm happy to announce that my son's having a child at the end of January and I am planning to be gone the 6th through the 11th of February. Um, so that I can go see that little person and, uh, I would really love to be at this airport listening session. And I hate to make it all about me, but if we can focus on dates that would work to that. And that gets back to my final question to, um, Terry on, um, Ingrid's question of what would the delay be if we push this back two or three weeks for the EA? If we said, you know what, let's, I don't want to spend the extra money, but what happens to the whole EA process? Does that mean if we say we don't want it right now, but we can tell you in two or three weeks? Um, what does that do to the whole timing? I'm just trying to get a clear picture of that.
So right now with the issues that we have, um, in the EA, which are relatively minor, you know, we're changing um, the amount of time that the airport will close under construction. We're changing the, the drainage, um, idea on the, on the project. Um, we're still working on a driveway issue, um, on State Highway E2. Those are, um, kind of minor issues and they think that it'll take about a month to process from the time that I give them, you know, the go ahead and say, we're gonna process now. Let's do, um, these issues under the reeval. If, um, we are going to add anything like, um, extending the runway to the north. Um, you know, we do have to have, um, at least two, two additional elements that would go into a reeval. And generally the reevals are really easy. They're like a letter that goes to CDOT and gets approval over about a month. But, um, if, if we move the runway to the north, we do have to do a noise study for those residents that are closest to the runway um, on the north side to, um, evaluate an increase in noise levels. And we would also have to do a public meeting, um, to explain that to, to the public. So, um, those two additional requirements, um, would extend that time of the reeval. So, um, your question was what happens if we, um, delay for about three weeks? It just, um, it just pushes out, um, that minimum of, of a, a month time for review for those issues. And like I said, if we, if we make a decision at that public meeting that we're gonna, um, do any one of those things, maybe it's take out the tunnel, maybe it's extend the runway to the north. Um, that just adds to that, um, reeval time. It's probably another month, I guess, to do a noise study and get those results. So one to two months beyond our decision is probably your answer.
Okay. And, and we are not making decisions at the listening session, correct? I'm just trying to hear what you just said. Right. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think so, but I, you know, I wanted to offer one thing at the listening session. Um, you know, it, um, some of this stuff is pretty technical, like the idea of moving the runway to the north. And then what happens, you know, to, um, the, the airport thresholds and stuff like that to the pilots, it's a big deal. Um, and I think, um, I, I personally feel like it would be, you know, to the public's benefit at any, any of those meetings to have just like, here are the facts, like a small presentation of this is what we're thinking about. This is what we're proposing. And then, um, you know, if it's me, I walk away and then all the discussions begin. I just feel like there's some basis in engineering that everybody needs to understand before we start talking about it. But there's my opinion for you. I'll leave it with you guys.
And if we do that, we're planning on recording it ahead of time and pushing play. So Terry did not have to stand in front of a room.
Well, in that case, could they, could you have that recording in front of that particular plan? And people could hit play when they get to that board so that they can understand it rather than let's do this presentation to the whole group? I mean, is that a possibility if it's a 10, five, 10-minute thing that people can listen to?
Absolutely. I think that would be easy. We could make a, a good presentation that they could just hit play over and over as they approach a particular board about. And I think the, the two, the two issues that I'd like to have the public understand are the, um, the, um, airspace study and the issue of needing to remove trees under any scenario. It, it exists today. We have hazard trees. Um, and then the second, um, issue that I'd like them to understand is what, um, what it looks like to extend the runway to the north and how that could be done. Um, so I think we could have two separate boards on, on both of those issues and maybe it's, you know, it's probably a less than five-minute, um, discussion on each.
And Terry, real quick, sorry, Deborah, but why, why couldn't we have a representative from Jacobs there to? Because there will be questions about the technical aspect. I mean, there, there are engineers, Dave Merritt's an engineer. There are other people that are going to ask technical questions that we pay these guys a lot of money. They can take some heat.
Yeah, um, you know, the air, airfield or the airspace study, boy, if you let those guys go, they've got, um, they've got an hour's worth of showing you how they, um, develop the data and cut planes through all of the, um, all of the, um, LIDAR data. It's, it's super cool. Nobody will understand it. Um, but I can.
Talking like a five-minute, like maybe they lead the presentation so you don't have to have your face even on a video. But maybe if you want to lead it, that's fine. I don't care. But having somebody there from Jacobs to just answer some questions or just be there as a resource, maybe they don't get any questions. Maybe they explain, you explained it so well. I don't care, but let's again, try to separate staff from this process. Go ahead, Deborah.
Okay, so I need to get to a decision point and there's a reason why we'd never let you guys do this because seven people don't design anything well. Um, is a, it sounds like we're pushing it off until mid-February. Um, please don't tie my hands to a specific date because I need the, it to work for people. Um, and why don't you guys send me a list separately of what you want out of this? And then maybe people who are super interested in it, we can do a subcommittee with council. Or you just have to trust me that we're gonna hit it enough of it and it may not be every super specific thing that you want. But I'm sure with all of our public meetings, you don't get everything that you want. Like I'm struggling because I have all of you come to me individually saying, I want this thing a hundred percent and I'm not gonna be happy if I don't have it. So can we either do a subcommittee of council that designs it or you tell me what you want and we try to get there?
Can you send us a list of our options and we'll just mark what we want out of those options?
I don't know if I can guess what you guys want. I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm trying to get to what you want. And it's not easy when you, seven of you want different things.
And Deborah, I, I just, just listening to everyone, I, I feel like, you know, Ingrid, Paula, Jonathan have all said kind of similar things that it's really about just listening. It's not about a lot of leading, you know, we've, we've got Terry needs and We as a city, we need a decision on this tunnel, tunnel, no tunnel thing. That's the most technical. You know, the piece that I'm not hearing in that, and this is a question for Terry, is We, we know approximately what the tunnel is going to cost us. And I think the whole reason we're going through all of this exercise Of looking at moving the runway north is to try to save those costs. I would like to know an estimate of what it's going to cost if we have to cut this and move the runway and shorten the runway and go through all of this Headache. Is it, is it worth it? Are we saving a million dollars? We're not, we know we're not going to save the full cost of the tunnel. So I think it's really important to have a cost in there for, for council. Maybe we don't need that for the listening session, but we need that for council. But other than that, as far as a listening session, Deborah, we I think it's, it's about listening. It's, it's kept very simple. I don't think, maybe we need a facilitator just to protect staff And, and manage the crowd if, if there's, you know, Issues that come up, but other than that, I really think you give them some things to look at and keep it very simple and listen. Have some basic questions about the airport, airport, no airport, long-term future. That's it on that question. I wouldn't go any further than that. That's just my preference and that's kind of what I'm hearing from the rest of council is that We, we don't want to turn it into a big led conversation.
That it is important though, to have either Jacobs there talking about the airspace study, to talk about the trees and some of the technical aspects that the public has no awareness of. Because if we're just sitting there listening to people, but they don't have that information On some of this new information with airspace study or a kind of a relatively new idea of relocating a runway. I, I think they do need, unless we're going to present that kind of information at our next council meeting publicly. But I, I think there has to be some kind of short presentation, not, not an hour, Terry.
Yeah, but I, I agree. It, it, I mean, obviously if we're going to be going in and cutting down a lot of trees in Glenwood Park, People need to know that. So.
And I agree with, with Shelley on the net cost. Terry, I think we do need that. I came up with some of my discussions that have last couple of weeks. And Ingrid, aren't you gone in part of February? We probably, I just want to be sure that Deborah's where those dates.
Can I have one second on net cost?
You know, it's, sorry, we're, we're really, we're really kind of short on time. I, I, I think right now we can have this conversation further. We only have 45 minutes left and we kind of have a hard, and sorry to cut you off, Terry, but We're kind of really getting into the like, the weeds in this. And I think right now we need to kind of figure out a date. We've already decided virtual doesn't work. Let's try to nail down a date that works for as many people as possible. And then if we want to start talking about all that other stuff, we can, but, but I, I would say like, we have three other items that right now might not be the time. Sorry, Terry.
That's okay. I would push for the week of our second meeting in February, if we could, just because of Sounds like people have plans earlier in February, February, I meant, not January.
Ingrid, what are your dates?
Why doesn't everybody send their dates to me that do not work in February?
Right.
I just did that. So, so that's what I was doing. I also, as you guys were talking, I sent her an email of my goals too. So I was sitting in the front row of this virtual meeting. I don't know what you all were doing.
I was paying attention and engaged.
I was fully engaged. I just also sent her dates that I was going to be gone.
Everybody send me your dates.
What those are.
Send me your Send me if you have specific goals you want to get to. I will combine them all. I will send them back out to you. We'll try to come up with a plan. We'll run it by you and then you guys can tell me whether we hit the mark or not. That work?
It does.
Let's commit to a date. We're going to get those to Deborah.
Can we do that by the end of the day? Would we have, I mean, is there any reason we can't do that today? Like literally after this meeting?
Sure. That's fine.
Cool. Clear contract. I'm sorry. I'm rushing through this stuff, but I, I really want to honor that hard deadline of, of 10:30 and we still have other things. So Deborah or Carl, can you please help organize? We have three items left. Uh, what are, we're only going to get through one, maybe two of the two. So help prioritize us.
Um, I, I was, what I would say on the charter stuff I sent out and I apologize for that. I thought I hit send last night. Um, a short memo that just kind of gave you the big areas that we're going to be needing to think about. Um, and really this was just the start of that conversation because they are kind of big top, some are easy, some are harder, big topic areas. I don't think we need to have a, a detailed discussion today, but I really would like you guys to, you know, maybe go to the charter, look at those provisions. Look at the charter and think about those kind of three big areas. And then the last thing is, um, you know, we're working on the Ward map and We'll bring that to you guys, whether you take action on it or not is up to you, but if it's going to be effective for next year, we need to get that done by April. That's really, that's the whole presentation in a nutshell. So you guys can give me, I, I've gotten some individual feedback, but you can give me individual feedback on this three big areas if you want to. Ryan and I are kind of working on the ideas related to just cleaning up and matching up better as we've gone through these last couple of petitions and things. So that we more accurate, accurately reflect in the charter statutes as well as state constitution, so that there's not confusion for people.
I wonder if we have an idea of their redistricting.
Uh, probably in four weeks.
I missed the last part of the, how long?
Probably four weeks.
Okay.
Mid-February. So that's it. So that one Jonathan, you can take off the list.
Great. So tell me what's more important, clear contract and future sustainability rebates or landfill fees and equipment presentation?
Well, you have Erica and Heather waiting. I know the landfill is very important As well. So we have 45 minutes for both of them, right?
Well, let's, let's start with, uh, let's see if we can get them, but let's, uh, start with the clear contract. I will bring Erica Over.
Jonathan, I'll be right back. Just going to run the restroom real quick.
Okay. And Heather?
And I bring Matt over as well.
Yeah. Can we take a five minute break?
Absolutely. Be back here at nine 50. Hi Erica.
Hey, you guys taking a quick break?
Yeah, just five minutes.
Figured you would need one.
I mean, if people come back before then we'll, we'll kick it back on. So
Okay.
Don't go too far.
I do have some slides to share, so I could get those queued up.
And not just over budget this line item, but actually put a budget in there is, is what meets our goals for the year, I guess. So kind of with that, you'll see that in the consent agenda item is that the contract is in there for the mayor to sign. With their exhibit A, which is the scope of services, they'll kind of go over today. So at that point I'd love to kick it off to Erica and Maysa To have them go through this presentation.
All right. Uh, thank you, Matt. It's good seeing everybody. Um, I've enjoyed listening to your meetings so far this morning, but I'm kind of a local government nerd. So But thank you for having us. I'm Erica Sparhawk. Uh, I'm the deputy director at Clear and Maysa Metcalf is sitting right here with me. And she oversees all of our building programs. And let me, what did we decide? I do present, then you don't see my little sidebar. So I know you're short on time, so I'll try and kind of blaze through a lot of this, but this is our annual update on Garfield Clean Energy. And all of the work that we do Glenwood Springs, you guys have been a founding member. And as a reminder, for the vast public that's probably watching, uh, Garfield Clean Energy is a government collaborative Made up of nine local governments who pool resources and work together on energy and efficiency programs. Those are primarily in buildings, local government, energy efficiency, renewables and transportation. So just give a, I'll, I'll go through some of our highlights from 2021. And I really, I know you guys have so many different topics, but I want you to know that Garfield Clean Energy had a really fantastic year. We got a lot done despite the pandemic and I'm really proud of our team. Maysa and the other staff who worked their tails off and accomplished a lot. So I'm really excited to show you guys those results. Our first program, we did our first bulk buy solarized program. Other neighboring counties had done that. We set a moderate goal of, I think we were hoping 80 people would sign up and enroll in the program, which just means they sign up and let us know they're interested in solar. And this is across the whole county. And we had over 400 people enroll in the program. I think we had 80 people the first day we watched. So we were thrilled to, that we have that much interest across the entire county. In the packet of materials, I gave you a whole table breakout of all the different enrollments by community. Folks like you are, you know, kind of find that interesting. But we did have 81 who were Glenwood Springs customers enroll. Over a hundred who were in the Glenwood Springs zip code. And so you see that on that table, uh, which I didn't pull up here, but by Excel, Holy Cross and your Glenwood Springs customers. And what that did is by getting everybody enrolled is The solar installer reduced the kind of provided a rebate And reduced costs for folks in addition to all of the rebates coming from the different utilities, including your own utility. So we had 28 new solar projects installed. And we did have a very high interest in storage and people installing storage at their homes, even with the additional cost and no additional rebate for it right now. And that was kind of fascinating and really good for our team to learn. Uh, we ended up doing quite a bit of coaching work. So we call it energy coaching, where energy advising And design assistance on multi-family projects. So that's what I wanted to highlight here. Whether that was the, we've actually been part of the design team for the Habitat project that's going up in rifle from the beginning. And that's really important to make sure that energy and efficiency are, you know, taken into the design components through the whole process. And then we've had some other projects that are going through approvals with communities and Have reached out to our team to get assistance. There are tax credits available for Incorporating efficiency into a residential development. So we're really interested in working with developers on Those projects. So if there's any listening, our team is available. Or if you guys want to send any projects our way, that's another way we've done it. I included a link in the packet to this video. I won't play it here. But we worked with the local videographer and she did this really fantastic video of doing a test drive of a couple of electric vehicles. And it was kind of our replacement for doing a ride and drive during the pandemic, since it doesn't really make sense to have people jumping in and out of shared vehicles, especially Last year before everybody was vaccinated. Um, and so we And so we have just been continuing to do this electric vehicle promotions and getting really creative. But I would encourage you to watch it. The woman's name is Natty and she's fantastic and does such a good job. And it's two dealerships right in your town. We also, you know, every year we try and do different programs that, in addition to electric vehicles, that really also focus on getting people out of their cars, taking advantage of all of our trail systems, getting on bikes or walking. This year we called the programs bike there and we had program, we had workshops in every community for all the GCE partners. So that's all the municipalities. And it was our first time really doing that where we have the same kind of event happening in each community. And we had really engaged volunteers in each town. So we're looking forward to growing that in 2022 and figuring out, fine tuning it, I should say, maybe not growing it, but. And then the big item that our team tackled, and I included the executive summary in the packet materials. There's also a link to the full document if anybody wants to go in and read the full 80 pages. It's just a really thorough study. I know we have plenty to read, but it's, it was really fun to work on and I think it's going to be really useful going forward. I'm just going to do some high level notes out of it of what we've learned. Matt mentioned it and I'll talk a little bit about what we've done with Matt on the map that was also created out of this process. But this started with the renewable energy program that DOLA offered. It was a grant program that we pursued in partnership with Walking Mountain Science Center and Core Community Office for Resource Efficiency, which are similar to Clear in Eagle and Picken Counties. And then we received matching grants from all, each individual county that we had used our match. And then Garfield Creek Clean Energy was the administrator and awardee for the whole grant. So really it was the GCE board that kind of oversaw, they got regular updates and kind of oversaw the project. And really it was to get some baseline information so that when we're talking about or asking our, our utilities to develop more community scale solar, that we, you know, can answer some of those questions and get them, get facts in front of everybody about what is available on land, how much could we actually cover with local solar? What's realistic? How much of our usage could we cover? So that we're not all just saying, oh, we could just cover every square, you know, square mile with solar. So we really wanted to get that information and identify it for all three counties. I think as Garfield County residents, you guys know, we have lots of great solar, especially in the western part of our county. But where, where can we find solar opportunities in Eagle and Picken? So it's more distributed across the grid. And that was a really important part of it so that it wasn't just written off as Garfield County always being the energy county. And so we answered a lot of these questions or we set out to answer a lot of these questions with this study. And came up with some facts. We also did an inventory of existing solar in the county to really help understand what's already being locally produced. And across our three counties, we have 24 megawatts of net metered, that means rooftop or onsite solar. And then we have eight megawatts of existing community scale solar systems. This was before the new Woody Creek one just went online in the last month or so, which is part of Holy Cross's grid. So that'll add another five megawatts. But just kind of getting this baseline information. And then we took, we use this from the National Renewable Energy Lab and identified, you know, there's the resource potential, which Garfield County, actually the county itself has done an energy study and they have a whole solar section that talks about this. Then this technical potential gets into where could we actually build solar? And then the, the next level down, kind of that market potential is what could actually be built with current policies that are in place and the grid, the real grid constraints by Holy Cross and Excel in particular. And use that to come up with our, our number, let me get, there we go. Then we also developed this solar site map and we've used this to look at actually a couple of projects with Matt. And Shelley, I did see your request for a login and I'm working on getting that to you, but I want to make sure you need that. So this was a, we worked with a national company that reviews all the parcels across our region. And they identified every parcel that had a minimum of five acres that could be used. That's about one megawatt, what's needed for one megawatt. Then they did the outreach to all the landowners, those parcels. And so here is kind of a snapshot of, we're not surprised, Garfield, Garfield County. All of the purple parcels are parcels that have been identified as potential. Like there could be a minimum of five acres available for solar. Then in our landowner outreach, all of the green dots are landowners who said, yay, I might be interested in leasing some of my land for solar. And we did this across all three counties. I'm happy to get a login to anybody. And this really helped us identify the number of parcels available, how they align with the grid. We've got layers on this map that show us where all the grid, grid fits in. And then we didn't include like who's actually interested in part of our analysis, but that's super helpful for moving this whole mapping process forward. And this is a dynamic map. So we're going to be able to continue to update this over time. And so it's through this process. And even though we didn't, they didn't necessarily identify parcels in Glenwood Springs Electric, because it is really difficult, as you guys all know. We were able to go on this map with Matt and look at areas around the landfill and use the measuring tools and see where the grid is and the substations. And we can continue to do that, just even if it's not an identified parcel, but it could help the city of Glenwood, looking at future projects. And so we, through this whole process, we identified that we could do, we could install 232 more megawatts of community scale solar. And that would be about 23% of our total usage across the three county region. And while that doesn't feel, it might not feel like a bunch, we don't have another source of local energy being produced at that level. If you think about it, you know, it's not like we have a big power plant, you know, all of our electricity is imported from elsewhere. And so the idea of being able to get 23% from local solar, diversifying the grid could be a big deal for our local energy suppliers. Then we took these, we did an entire, there's a whole chapter in the study on the economic benefits. And we really looked at what the property tax revenue would be, the land lease revenue. So that's revenue that local landowners would receive for leasing their land for community scale solar. What the energy savings would be. And then you'll see the first two lines on this table are the local capture for a project being built here. You know, 100% of projects costs are not going to be here because we don't have somebody manufacturing solar panels, you know, manufacturing steel. But there is still a lot of contractors, there's attorneys, there's real estate agents. You know, there's a whole embedded part of this local capture that we really did a lot of work to articulate. And that is, we've got some charts that are pretty easy to see that breakout of what could be captured locally in the, in the study that I think you guys would find interesting in particular. And then we identified the barriers that are in place and then what could be done to overcome some of those barriers. A lot of them are much bigger than any of our, you know, scope of, of power or what we can do and that they're regulatory. But we still wanted to identify those because those, we know there's different representatives working on legislative, legislative solutions. And this is really good information for them to have because we've really put the numbers to it. I did delete a few slides when you guys were running out of time. So let me, so we also, our goal was to create a toolbox for both local governments and landowners to make it really easy for you all, or let's say I'll use the landowner. If they've decided that they do want to lease, we've really laid it out for them on what that looks like. And just like, you know, all of the coaching services that we do, it's kind of an independent third party. Like here's what you can expect, here's a range of lease rates, here's how that process will work. It could be, you might say you're interested in leasing your land and a project might not happen for three years. So it's just really making sure that we've got information for folks to understand that. And then this map that I showed you is an ongoing tool and resource for our local governments and for solar developers. Let's see. Um, for 2022, we, the part of our follow-up will be working on implementing components of the Solar Plus Storage Action Plan. I actually deleted the slides as I go into a lot of those details so that we wouldn't, but I'm happy to follow up with any of you if you want to go through it. The GCE board has been engaged and looked at those through the strategic planning process, which I do want to acknowledge that Ingrid's been a really fantastic vice chair of Garfield Clean Energy. And was, Ingrid, it was great to have you at the strategic planning process. So thanks for your participation in GCE.
So I'll take a minute to say thank you too so much and the whole team. You guys are such hard workers. You come so well-prepared and knowledgeable about everything. And then you also have this passion, which is so evident. And I just thank you so much. You represent the, the whole region so well in this, in this capacity. So thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. I'm going to have Maysa to talk about, we've got a new exciting low middle income program that we are going to be doing in 2022. And Maysa is the lead on that. And so I'm going to have her go over what that's detailed. And then we'll get into our separate contract that we have for the city for implementing your programs.
Yeah. So we received 150,000 from Garfield County. And what we're going to be doing with that money is basically implement a program that can help low to moderate income families in Garfield County. We know there are some existing programs that help folks, you know, they're low in the spectrum of the income. For example, LEAP and CARE programs, but we want to help the folks that don't necessarily qualify for those programs. But they may not have the funding available to do upgrades to increase the comfort of their homes, decrease their utility bills. So we're going to be targeting homes with propane heat. Seniors who might be struggling right now to pay the utility bills and upgrade their homes. So we're going to be working with the other assistance programs are already reaching out to this folks to make sure we're complementing their programs by offering additional incentives to those existing programs, but also, also helping folks that don't qualify for them. So we're really excited about this program. We're going to be weatherizing homes, making sure they have LED bulbs, making sure they're really increasing their comfort and reducing their bills. So we're going to be launching the program really soon and we're already reaching out to some organizations that work with low to moderate income families in the county. And I'm excited to come back here and give you guys an update pretty soon.
And I think now we can talk about the scope of services, right? For 2022? Let me just pull that up.
Okay. So after we had some conversations with Matt and Doug Hazard, we kind of came up with this list of rebates for 2022. I think the biggest change you guys are seeing is we eliminated solar rebates. And we're going to focus more on, as you see, the first one is low to moderate income incentives. So we're going to, again, complement the GCE rebates. And if it's a Glenwood Springs Electric home, we're going to make sure that if they need additional incentives, that we can use some of the funding available to help them with those upgrades. We're also going to continue offering the Home Management Assessment Rebate and making sure the homes are being weatherized. So they're not using a lot of electricity in the summer with cooling, for example. Make sure the houses are really airtight and weatherized. LED lighting continues to be a very popular rebate in Glenwood Springs Electric. So we want to make sure that folks can still qualify for those rebates. The other thing we want to do is focus on beneficial electrification, make sure the homes that heat with natural gas can do a fuel switch. The equipments are, the price is coming down, but we want to make sure we still offering a really good rebate for those air source heat pumps. MEAN actually has a really great incentive. So we want to make sure folks are aware of the MEAN rebate and can access the Glenwood Springs Electric rebate as well. And then the other big change of the EV bikes was actually a very popular rebate this year. So we want to continue those, get those folks out of their car and riding their bikes more often. We also included an EV charging station rebate for 500. We want to make sure folks that are buying electric vehicles can get a, you know, a little help with their charging station at home. And we also implemented what I'm really excited about this year is the bundle rebates. You want to make sure that folks can do more than just one measure. So if they can do two or three measures, we're going to give them a bonus rebate for, you know, doing two or more. And then we continue offering the commercial rebate for any electric savings in the business. And we're going to be focusing a lot of outreach, marketing, making sure folks are aware of our rebates and the city's rebate and also the MEAN rebate as well. Any questions?
Good call.
I have a couple of questions. That's really exciting to see where you're going with what Glenwood could do this year. And one of my questions actually goes back to Matt of the possibility of going through the, going through the notes last night. It seems like we are, our hands are tied a little bit with MEAN and is there a potential for changing that agreement with MEAN so that we can provide more opportunities for people moving into like solar panels and that type of stuff? And for the city of Glenwood to do that as well?
So I'll start with the city of Glenwood. There, there's definitely opportunities for us to have discussions with MEAN. They cap us at a 5% of our total usage in the year. So that puts us around, I think a four megawatt solar farm, if we wanted to do a farm. And that's kind of what I've been working with Clear on a little bit on that solar map. And I've been talking to some landowners and a few other different things to kind of see where we can bring that in the, in the future here. So that is definitely a possibility to have a conversation with them. We could go all, we could do whatever we want to. We just have to bring it back to the MEAN board and just say, here's our contract. This is what we would like to do, kind of thing. So as for the contract, the contract is the contract, we can ask the board to change it. When it's the caps on the 25 or the 100, you know, that is a city of Glenwood Springs cap. And how we meter those things is kind of affected, affects us a little bit. And those are our conversations, since you are the electric board, that we can definitely have internally and see where we want to go with it. I would just caution that what we rebate people for those net metering conversations is a fair and equitable dollar amount versus what we pay. So like what you pay for your electricity is not what we pay for bulk electricity. So we would have to come up with a fair and equitable kind of dollar associated with that. And how that electricity is put to the system and if storage is involved or not involved, all those kinds of fun things. If somebody wants to put in a, if we wanted to put in a solar farm and put a battery backup or battery storage to it, that would be beneficial to not only us, but the grid and the cost of services, because we could potentially knock down some of that FCRC that we pay to MEAN for those fixed costs. Because we'd be bringing our peak down because you'd want those batteries to turn on during the peak. So a lot of those things are in discussion at this point and how we could do them. But I think we probably do need to, I think Shelley brought it up last time. Probably do need to get the electric board together and have a discussion on where we'd like to see things go. We'll have some discussions about the rates, where we talked about last time, those kinds of fun things. So yes and yes, maybe.
Couple more questions. The map that you showed us, Erica, is that just private land that are those green spots? Or is there public land in there as well? Are you talking to towns and that type of thing with their land?
That's such a good follow-up question. It is all private landowners that appear on the map. The company we worked with created a separate list of government parcels. We didn't put them on the map because honestly, it came up with a lot of like Picken County Open Space and Trails parcels and other, same with Eagle, where we didn't want people to be on red alert of like, oh yeah, let's build solar in Filoja Meadows, you know?
Right, right.
So we have a separate list that we've organized by local government. And then what we can, what we also do is like Town of Assault was looking for a parcel. So similar to what we did with Matt is we just opened up the map with them and kind of went and they said, oh, here's what we're thinking. And we were like, oh yeah, it was just under what are the map company that we hired, their criteria. So it didn't get flagged, but we were able to flag it ourselves, kind of thing.
Okay. And the regional transmission organization that's mentioned in here, is that something in process of, we're trying to organize? Or, or is that more like what Clear is doing anyways? And why rebuild the, why be redundant? I guess I'm trying to understand the difference there.
There is movement at the state legislature to look at these regional authorities for, and so, and whether, you know, the state should join them or different utilities will join them. So either, it's a much bigger topic than, than what Clear's working on. If it comes to a point where If it comes to a point where we think there's a piece of legislation or there's a regulatory measure that we think would make sense for GCE to weigh in on or Glenwood to weigh in on, then we, we're going to try and track it. But there are other entities that are definitely looking at that bigger picture.
Okay. All right. And my last question is curiosity. You mentioned that to date, four local governments in the region have achieved Soul Smart. Can you tell us who those are?
Oh, yes. So Garfield County achieved gold, Soul Smart. Town of Carbondale is silver. Town of Silt is gold. And you guys are in process. I know Jen, it's, it's on her list and it's very close to being completed. And then I am totally forgetting right now who the fourth one is, but okay, town of Eagle or Basalt.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Shelley, then Charlie, then Ingrid.
Okay. Thanks Erica and Maesa. That was a great presentation and great job for the last year. I had a question on, so the 81 that showed interest in solar. And we had 28 installed. So did they receive a rebate from the city electric?
That's correct. So the 28, yes, they all received a rebate from the city plus a smaller incentive from the installer. So that's how kind of Solarize works. For every system purchased, the installer provided a small rebate. I think it was, depending on the total amount, I think it was, we ended at 275.
Okay, okay. All right. And is there still a core rebate for solar?
Not anymore.
Not anymore. Okay. All right. So, and that program continues into this year, 2022?
Right. We decided not to focus our efforts on Solarize. And we saw huge success, but we also think that we want to focus more on helping the low to moderate income folks. They don't have access to, you know, solar rebates. So yeah, we kind of just want to focus more on beneficial electrification, more weatherization and things like that. We're seeing people adopt solar even without incentives because of the price has come down quite a bit.
Okay, okay. Thanks. And then on the multifamily projects, I didn't see any in Glenwood. Is there? I, I know, I'm guessing you guys have reached out to projects. Is that? What are your thoughts on that?
We just didn't have a lot of luck with Glenwood Springs multifamily projects. We did engage with a few and we just never heard back. I think updating the building code would be really great for Glenwood. We're seeing definitely a lot of construction happening and the code is just very outdated. So we're excited that you guys are updating that this year. I'm, I'm going to talk to Heidi McCollough. She's our building specialist and she's working a lot on multifamily and commercial. We're going to strategize and see how we can do a better job reaching out to the multifamily projects in Glenwood.
Okay, okay.
And it is one of the goals for this year too. So it's, it's one of the, you know, key goals within our strat plan. So it's happening and it's in queue, but obviously the last couple of years have been a little tumultuous as far as reaching out to that kind of group. So.
Right, right. Let's see. It seems like I had one more question. I can't think of that right now. Actually, it's more for Matt and it has to do with solar and storage. Oh, that was it. Did we have any, anybody install storage in Glenwood of those 28?
Yeah, we did. And I will follow up with the exact number. I don't have it right in front of me, but we definitely did.
Okay, great. And Matt, do we have a way that, you know, I know Holy Cross Energy, they, they rebate or give storage systems to people that are interested. Same with EVs, EV chargers, so that the city can use that stored energy to again shave its peak. Are we looking at trying to build that technology in or get there at some point? And maybe that's a conversation for later, but just a thought that I'm having. I think I had sent you an email a couple of months ago with a lot of that stuff. So.
I, I think that we are interested in that conversation. It's a, it's a complicated conversation, as you can imagine, of how that would function. I'm not so interested in the EV, you plug your car in, we pull from the power from the car and then we put the power back kind of conversation. I'm more interested in the, the wall hanging battery conversation. That's a permanent fixture that can be directly connected to some infrastructure. Cause we have, you know, basically built out all of our AMI meters in town. So we have connectivity there and there's other ways that people are working on to be able to make sure that when the peak is happening, that those batteries turn on so that we can cut the peak back down. Because the homeowner, I don't think really cares when the electricity is being pushed back to the home. Because it's going to be a benefit to them one way or another, you know, at least I as a homeowner with a storage facility. I don't care if it's coming back in the middle of the day or at five o'clock or whatever it is. Unless I have it stored there just because I want to have it there for a battery backup if the system goes down. Kind of thing. So I think it's a, it's definitely a long-term conversation. And it's one that I've been thinking about of how to cost effectively do that. And if we do that and we can pull the peak down, can we help fund portions of those batteries themselves? Because we're cutting the FCRC down a little bit, which is a dollar savings. You know, there's all these fun things to ponder. How to make them work is a little bit more interesting. And how cost effective will they be is very, very interesting to me. So, but I think we definitely need to get the board together. And I want MEAN here so we could have a conversation about those RTOs that were brought up and the imbalance systems that are coming into this market and all these other fun things that are going on right now. That we don't really have a whole lot of control over. We're a small fish in this, this very large pond of electricity. But bringing those systems in, we do see the benefit of that as a group, the MEAN group. We see a benefit of that for sure. So we definitely need to get the board together and get MEAN out here and have a good conversation. And even Clear can, can chime in on those kinds of conversations of what's good for the region. Because what's good for us is not always good for the Grand Junction area, the Denver area or a different state, which these RTOs will cover as a very large area.
Great.
And I do want to put in one more thing before another question comes out. Just because I've been looking over power usages over the last few years. And MEAN has always put us basically from 2009 was our peak, our peak, peak. And from then, we've been going downhill basically or flattened off. And in the last six years, which I do have data sitting in front of me for, we've basically not fluctuated more than a 1%. 2020, I just threw that out because it's, we fluctuated about 8% because nobody was working, nothing was turned on. But in the last six years, we basically haven't fluctuated more than about 1, 1.3% on how much power the entire grid uses, which is a, a, a good reflection on what Clear, GCE and all these people are doing to bring efficiencies in. So even when Six Canyons came on in 2017, I didn't see a fluctuation of that much. When the Lofts came on, you don't really see the fluctuation. You would expect if there was incandescent bulbs and all these other fun things within the buildings and the, the buildings hadn't been built efficiently. So I think they're doing a really good job and even the, by themselves, without the multifamily coming to Clear, they're doing a pretty good job themselves of making everything as efficient as possible.
Okay. That's good to hear. Yeah. It's good to hear that you're holding, yeah, we're holding steady on electricity. Okay.
So Charlie, Charlie's hand is up, but then he.
No, I just took it down because I know it's next. So I have just a real, Matt, I don't even need to really, Deborah, that's kind of for both of you. Go into a lot of detail with five minutes I have left, but if I'm incorrect, you can certainly correct me. I don't remember that we have met as electrical boards since I've been in council, which is almost three years now. If we have, that's just, I don't even know what the electrical board is. I assume that the electrical utility was part of our enterprise fund and it was separate. So if you could, you know, not in today, but in the, in the not too distant future, and I don't want to put additional burdens, but I am by saying that. Can you give us a quick memo of what it is, what we, what the board is supposed to do and why we need to meet? Cause I know that was on the agenda list or the, you know, priority agendas stuff.
And I don't believe Matt is the electric board since I've been the manager, right? I think you guys made visions.
Yeah, that you've taken action as the electric board. The financing's coming out of the, the electric department. All of those are acting in your capacity as the electric board. So actually it'll probably be my office will do that Charlie and it'll be pretty straightforward.
Okay. Yeah. I don't, doesn't, I don't need a lot, just somebody remind me and why we need to meet and how, why that's important to me too. Cause it sounds like there's discussion about that. So thank you.
And I think just so you guys know and Matt, that Council Hershey also wants to talk about making sure we don't lose electricity.
We don't lose what?
That the lights never go off.
Cool.
Ingrid.
Okay. I had two questions. One is, ladies, we talked at one point about reaching out to some of the local high schools and, you know, schools in general to see if we can have some engagement with the solar mapping with kids. Has that come to fruition yet? Is there an opportunity to move forward on that? And I hate to add things. So if it doesn't happen, I just think it's such a fun consciousness raising opportunity for young students to recognize how that works within a community.
We have not actively pursued those opportunities. We did do a presentation to a high school class at Coal Ridge. And we had just released the map. So it was really good timing and it was really, I mean, the kids got it. They were like, oh, this is cool. This is, we get it. With all this solar. And then I think it was either at Roaring Fork or Glenwood High, a teacher also had reached out. We get occasional requests to come in and talk about energy or whatever. And this map has actually made it really fun because it's more than just us being geek, you know? Electricity works.
It makes it real. It's applicable to their world. So, and then the next question, Matt, is of all those new complexes, the majority are not heated with electricity, but there have been some developments that have been in front of us that would be heated with electricity, correct? Or they wouldn't even have natural gas run to the, the, the units. Is that correct? And would that make a huge impact? I mean, I'm guessing that it's probably a yes.
Well, the answer is, yeah, the other, the Six Canyons, I believe, and the Lofts and the Lofts Phase 1, 3, 4, 5, whatever, 12 or 100 at this point. They do have gas run to them. So they are doing some force air heating. I'm assuming. I haven't looked at their mechanical plans, but Bell Rippey is all electric. So those 78 or whatever units there were on there will all be heated through either, I think, heat pumps or LED lighting and there will be electric induction stoves. I can't remember what it's called. But they're a completely 100% electric facility. And it'll be very fascinating to see what that does. And I'm glad they came on. I'm glad they came on when they did, because we'd have kind of just planned out, which is perfectly fine for us. We'd either like to plane out or go down. Because that means we think more becoming more and more efficient. So, and not 2020 efficient, but it'd be really interesting to see what happens. Cause they will have many meters. We'll have them all on AMI. We'll be able to see what they do basically every five seconds if we want to. It'll be fun to track that and see how efficient those buildings really are. And see what the cost differential is, see what the BTU versus electric kilowatt hours is going to be. It's going to be an interesting test case for us.
Yeah, great. That's, that'll be fun. I look forward to seeing that as well. Thank you.
I had one more thing to just add really quick. Kind of based on Paula's first question is I want to make sure you guys know that you're not the only utility cutting back or removing solar rebates. And Holy Cross is looking at that as well. And they're really looking at revisiting their whole rebate program. So that they are incentivizing, again, they're making lower and moderate income homes more comfortable and use less energy. And then they're encouraging all electric, but they're really moving away from solar and they may even disincentivize solar going forward if there's any solar without storage installed. They're requiring, they're requiring storage. So I really want to make sure you guys know that you're not, this is not unique. It's not just because of the additional costs that MEAN, MEAN charges you. It is a, it is a trend we're seeing with all the utilities, especially as we move towards all electric, implementing all electric and the grid becoming greener because of contracts like what you guys have or what Holy Cross has with large scale renewables. So I just wanted to, to add that to make sure you guys know you're, you're trend setting, actually.
And a follow-up on Shelley's question about the battery storage in Glenwood. So we had seven out of the 28 projects install battery storage.
And I'll say, you know, we're, we're getting towards the end here. We want to make a pretty clean thing, but if we can finish up, I have just a few questions. So I'm a little confused. We're trend setting by not having these, these rebates for solar anymore, right? But I'm talking like a simple caveman lawyer here. Like it seems like we'd want more solar and want to incentivize it. So why are we or other places going away from that?
Part of it is this trend that Matt, that Matt brought up where the Glenwood Springs, your total usage has been even for about six years. Holy Cross is experiencing that similarly. And that, that energy use has not gone up because of efficiency programs and renewables. So when somebody, when Maesa added solar to her house, she's no longer, you know, pulling energy from the grid most of the time during the day. It's just being fed right from her onsite solar. So then that growth, you're not really seeing. So even though new projects have been built, you have more people generating their own electricity. So it is a good, so it is a good thing. It's not a bad thing. It's just, at least in the, the conversations that I've had with Holy Cross is they see it now that they've reached a point where it's more just, they want to make sure that they're putting their money to help more people across their grid. And that it's not just all the funds going to folks who can afford to sell solar or to buy solar and install it. But they're really, it's an equity thing. They want to make sure that all of their customers are actually getting, getting equal access or access to those funds. So it's more of a, we've got this set amount that we can give out as rebates. And so who are we going to give it to? It's, and, and then at the same time, there are more and more large contracts coming on that are, that are adding more renewables to the grid. So it's not so much, yeah.
Yeah, it does. It does. I think that's a great direction to go. I just think, you know, in the vein of, we need to meet as an electric board and have this conversation. It seems that, you know, people who are contemplating or were contemplating this, if it just went away January 1st, I think that's a board decision to remove those, to, to, to make a decision, an inflection point and not have it be a interlateral, like we're just going to end this. You know, I don't think the community was well noticed about that. There's a lot of people who didn't get around it, weren't able to participate in the Garfield, into your program this last year. So I, I don't know, I don't know if we want to start those rebates again. I just think that that seems like an electric board decision to unilaterally end those rebates, especially for the first. If we're being a trend setter, maybe we should be a trend setter purposely and with purpose and, and do it in a way before we take it away. Continue to have it, but at the same time, then be working on, what does this look like to replace it? But like taking away this, this repeal and replace. I don't know. Am I looking at this the wrong way, Deborah?
I just think, I just wanted to clarify. I think we talked about this during budgeting. So I don't think like this is the first time you guys have heard it. I mean, as far as whether we do it or not, I would defer to Matt and Clear on that.
Well, and the other thing you got to ponder is that's, that's some savings for the, the electric department. You know, we have a lot of big things coming up this year and no offense to solar installers. Putting in 10 kilowatts of solar panels versus four megawatts solar panels is super inefficient. So if we can save money and come in, kind of like Holy Cross does and put in a solar farm and let people buy into the solar farm instead of putting it on their house, they're still getting the same thing. If, if we want to look at next year, putting the solar program back in or putting a, a storage capacity versus solar program back in, I think that's something we want to talk about. Because once again, solar, it's sunny for five hours out of the day today. People are putting solar onto the grid. That doesn't help the grid in any way at 4:30 in the afternoon, unless they have a battery backup. They're just racking up dollars in a time that I don't need that power. So that's kind of the negative of solar. If you don't have storage capacity is you're going to produce solar all day long. And it doesn't help me at all when the peaks occur because it's dark in the morning, it's dark in the afternoon and the winter time. So we have to look at how much money we're spending to basically negatively impact ourselves. Or how much money do we want to spend and say, okay, you do solar, we'll give you half the cost of the battery so that you can turn that battery on when we want you to, so that we can cut the peak hours. And putting solar in en masse is way more cost effective. The proposal we just got through MEAN doing solar installations with, with considerations for battery backup is basically the same cost as we're paying for bulk power right now. So it is such a good dollar amount that we could potentially switch over to gathering that sun during the day, putting it in a battery and putting it back to the grid when we want to, that it wouldn't actually cost us anything more than we're already basically paying for bulk power. So I think you have to take it from the, the macro, the micro scale that you're looking at and look at it on a macro scale. And also see what it does to the, the company that is selling the electricity at the same time. And I think Holy Cross also has kind of gathered this in that it is not super cost. Um, that it, it is not super cost effective if you don't have storage, which is why they're potentially moving towards storage incentives also. So, once again, the people that can afford solar are going to buy solar, whether we give them fifteen hundred bucks back or not. The people that are using, and I maybe it was clear that brought it up, they're using Levi jeans for insulation in their attic. I'd like to get them insulation so that their building is much more efficient, so that their costs can come down. And they're not using as much electricity at the same time. Um, so I think there's definitely a shift. And we're not trend setting, we're just, we saw what Holy Cross was doing. We saw what the market was kind of doing and we said, hey, let's save a little money this year. Let's not, not disincentivize solar because people are going to put it on whether we give them the fifteen hundred bucks or not. Let's think about a different way to do this. Let's help the, the less fortunate and see if we can help them make their, their lives more efficient at this moment. Um, and move with it. So that's kind of the reasoning that I have behind it.
So I, I think all that's great. My comment or question was more about process. We had a, a budget conversation, but the, the process of taking something away from the community. And, and I disagree with you, Matt. I think people will not, that changes the payback period. And if people have a payback period, fifteen hundred dollars goes away. That will delay people putting on solar. Now, there's a larger, broader conversation on solar farms versus individual and storage. We haven't met as a board to have a conversation. So I think anytime we take something away as a community, we should be intentional about that. Now, I, I, I get everything you say is right in, in my mind. Let's make it more targeted, more litmus means tested. But I, I do struggle with when we take something away from everybody, regardless of their income, without largely promoting this or telling people that's something that we have always done or have done for the last ten, twenty years is going away. I, I don't think that that's great process. And if it does go away, and there seems to be a ton of reasons for it to go away for the majority of people who would put solar on, we should have this conversation, have things put in place and have a process of, of what's going to replace it for just whoops, it, it goes away. Uh, that's just my opinion on, on that. I don't know if there's, um, if I, I'm really like interested now in, in jumping back and reinstating it. Um, but I think just for the future that we just should be intentional about that. And, and maybe we would come to the same conclusion. Um, when does our, real, real quick, like really quick? Cause I, I didn't mean for that to go on so long, but when does our contract, our current contract with me? And I know we extended it. I thought ten more years when we signed the last one a couple of years ago. Do you, do you know that, Matt?
We extend contracts year by year.
With me?
Oh, with me. I'm sorry. I was thinking clear because that's the contract. So mean is yes, ten years. So that'll be twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-nine. I believe I'd have to go back and look at the exact dates, but.
So, so some of the things we're talking about, just so we're all clear, I want to give staff all the credit, current and previous staff for never giving us these fifty-year contracts that are causing horrific repercussions for, for communities that are, are with Excel and Tri-State. So, so awesome, awesome for past staff, current staff, but we're going to have an opportunity in the next seven years to vet some of the stuff. So when we talk about five uh, percent, that's, that's all something I think in the next half decade, we really need to look at so that we can be positioned going into twenty twenty-nine to go. Here's what our community needs are. And we did this, I think in two thousand nineteen and, and it's been great. But these technologies are changing so quickly with storage and community farms and even carbon, like all of that stuff. Um, you know, let's, let's take, this is, I think, an opportunity to take kind of the long view of the next half decade and see where we want to be and, and use that um, in conversation with me and as our partner to develop something that's going to work for us in twenty, probably twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, because we're not going to wait till twenty twenty-nine when the contract expires to have the conversation. The con, the contract renewal conversation probably starts in the next forty-eight months. So let's, let's look at this stuff and, and clear is a great partner with us. Um, so anyway, I guess those are my comments and suggestions. Ingrid.
I, I just wanted to say thank you so much, Erica, Maesa, for coming in today. And obviously there's another dialogue that we as a council and, and, and the, the electric board need to have. If you, just like you, you know, are hearing from other communities, if there's any feedback you hear on how people are doing it, how we can do it better, please don't hesitate to, to share that with us. We do want to, to go to the next tier. I just heard solar farms that, you know, ideas like that, bring them to us. Um, but then obviously what I'm hearing, especially from Jonathan's comments, is that we need to get this electric board dialogue on our agenda and we need to iron out some of these details. Um, because I think there's some conflicting perspectives on what direction is the best direction to go. That was, that was all I wanted to say.
Yeah, we're happy to help or be part of that conversation. And, uh, I mean, Matt has a lot of really great ideas and, uh, you guys have, um, I will just, you know, I feel like the city of Glenwood has been really overwhelmed with other emergencies that Public Works has had to focus on. And, um, I totally acknowledge that, but I am really grateful that we get to work with Matt and I'm not just sucking up here. It is like he is constantly pushing the envelope. I remember the very first meeting we had with him. He was like, well, what about storage incentives? We need to make sure people are installing storage. So I feel like, um, you're in really good hands and he is paying attention to what's going on around. We are happy, you know, I'm excited that you guys are looking at, you know, a community scale type project with storage. And, um, yeah, the clear team is here to, to help or provide assistance or outside research, uh, whatever, whatever that, uh, is needed. So.
Thank you. Thank you. And we totally and completely agree that we are so fortunate to have Matt and, and just his relationship with you guys and his creativity. Thank you, Matt. We are so fortunate.
Well, I really enjoy working with the clear team also, every single one of them. They're really amazing.
Awesome. All right. So the hard best deadline of being done by ten thirty was blown out of the water partially by me. So, uh, if there's any, thank you again for the presentation, guys. Uh, you're great partners, always have been. Uh, we, we look, uh, to continue to look forward to working with you as we look at building codes and some of this other stuff. It's really exciting. You two are awesome. We have, but we don't have time for is landfill fees and equipment presentation. Matt Langhorst, is there, Charlie had made a recommendation that maybe there's time tonight.
Why don't we do it at five o'clock?
Because we have climate action plan. That is. What's that?
If Matt is available at five or five fifteen, I'd like to be able to talk about this landfill and that issue this afternoon. I, I suspect the climate action plan will take some time, but I don't think much more than a half hour. So I would like to see us talk about the landfill.
Well, I'd have to double, double check with Liz because it's going to be the Liz show, to be honest with you. I'm going to kick it off and she's going to go through everything. And then I was going to be there for questions and answer period, kind of like this. So is, is Liz still on?
Well, before Liz jumps on, hold on a second. Let me see if she's on. Yes, she is. Let me promote her real quickly. And again, I don't want to get into this conversation because I went on everybody's time where we committed to last time we spoke about this. But one of the big things was the hard and fast we done made ten thirty, but, um, what is the rest of council think about subs, either cutting short the climate action plan conversation? Uh, because I do, I do think Charlie, when we had put that on, it was put on for like the forty-five minutes, we knew this was going to be a remote meeting. We're not doing dinner, all that, but um, one, do we want to just replace it with this conversation? And if we do, when do we want to talk about our climate action plan? Or can, do we think we can get both of those things in? Or do we want to start earlier? We probably can't start earlier because it's already noticed.
Uh, I guess my view and Liz, I don't know, maybe you can tell us when you're available. That might make a big difference, but I think the climate action will be fairly short. And I would shoot to say we're going to do it twenty-five minutes and let's talk about the landfill for the, give us forty-five minutes of that, which still gives us a half hour for dinner. Liz is saying she can be there at five, so.
Okay. What do people think about how long that climate action plan conversation is going to have or need to take?
I don't know. I don't know how long it will take, but I, I guess my tendency would think if we, if we can't do the landfill discussion now and extend, maybe we just reschedule the climate action discussion. What do you think of that, Deborah?
Or Paula?
Or Paula. Um, I'm kind of wondering if we put the landfill first at four thirty and then see how long it goes and decide whether or not to move forward on climate action at that point, since that's more internal discussion.
The only problem is we have candidates who are here for interviews at four forty-five. If that's what you're going to say, Deborah. So that's pretty immovable.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading a, maybe an old agenda that said those interviews are at four fifteen. So I'll have to go find the new one.
Go ahead, Deborah.
Just going to say, if we, um, if we want to put the climate discussion in the comp plan, we need to know that from you guys, right? Cause it's, it's moving.
If that's the only question you have, then I think Charlie's right. It probably, I, I thought we were going to start to try to address it ourselves. But if that's the only question that's before us, then we probably have time to add that in.
I don't know if it's the only question, but it is a definite question that I would like an answer to tonight. If possible.
Okay. Well, I'm fine having that. If, if we think it can be short, then I'm fine having that personally after our, uh, five o'clock, if Liz, you're still on for five oh five for, um, landfill fees conversation.
She said she's good.
Okay. Is everybody else okay with that?
Yeah, I had the same agenda as four fifteen for the planning zoning commission interview. So I don't know when they got bumped back that half hour. So I, I wasn't aware of that. So I'm not complaining. I just, I had an agenda I printed two days ago or yesterday morning, I think. So I didn't know that to change the time. I thought.
The one online is correct.
Four forty-five for the, the meetings?
Yes.
So are we starting to get it four forty-five and not four fifteen?
The published agenda says four forty-five, so we are starting at four forty-five.
So clarity then four forty-five for planning and zoning and that will take fifteen minutes. And then Liz is going to join us at five and then we're going to talk about climate action plan. I'm assuming it's going to take fifteen minutes. So really we're looking at taking five to six o'clock and leaving ourselves fifteen minutes for dinner. Is that correct? And I can eat at my desk. That's okay. I just want to know that that's what we're saying.
How, how long, Matt? I'm sorry. How long, Liz? Do you think that our conversation is going to be about landfill rates?
Uh, hi there, everybody. Um, I can make it, I can make the presentation pretty fast. Uh, I can run through the presentation in ten minutes. And then it really just depends on how much discussion you all want to have um, about anything that comes up. So it, it could be fifteen minutes.
Paula, I personally am like you. Oh, just go ahead, Shelley.
Oh, I, I just had a comment, you know, to me, the, the rates issue will be quicker, but there were some questions that Matt and Liz had, I think on the final couple of slides about broader issues and programs that we could undertake and that might could take a little bit longer. So I, I'd hate to cut that conversation too short. So I think we need at least a half an hour.
Well, let's, let's, let's maybe make a suggestion. I'll make a suggestion that if by five forty-five, let, let's have a, a fairly rough shutdown of five forty-five. If we're done in a half hour, great. We'll have time for the climate action plan. If we're not, let's make sure we, we talk about this enough that we can get a conclusion on it by five forty-five. That gives us a half hour for break mental and, uh, uh, food wise. Um, and then we'll take the climate action planet at future agenda. How's that sound? At five forty-five, I mean, I can, I can go to six, ten and eat while we're having dinner, but maybe that's not the best look.
Well, I, I did, Deborah just said she needs us to know the comp plan. I think we had to at least get that far before we take our dinner break.
Could we bring, could we bring the climate action, just question as far as the comp plan's concerned, bring that up in council comments and give direction? Would that work?
That works for me. If that's what we can get to.
If we don't, if we don't get to it.
Yeah.
That's fine.
When we have the discussion, I'm going to tell you guys that it's best to do the comp plan next year. And then let's look at, because we can't do another huge planning effort next year and then look at it in twenty twenty-three to actually update it with the community. So like a two-step process. Just because capacity is non-existent next, this year.
I, I apologize, Deborah. Did you say we're going to move the comp plan back a full year?
No, 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 no. I'm saying for, I would recommend we go ahead and just do the comp plan chapter next, this year, because I can't tell you with a straight face that I can ask staff to do another community outreach specifically on the climate action plan. When they're doing cop plan and affordable housing ad hoc committee plan, like they are just tapped out. So it would be better to do the comp plan this year and do the community plan next year.
So we're starting to have a conversation about the conversation. So.
We are.
I, I, I'm up for whatever, guys, but again, I think we're, we're really wanting to stay at ten thirty. If we want to have that conversation now, let's, let's kind of give a head nod. Yes, we're good for another fifteen minutes or so to have the conversation. Or I think let's have it tonight. If we have time at five forty-five, great. And if not, before forty-five, five forty-five. And if not, council comments. How does that sound for everybody? Okay. Thanks, everybody. Anything else for the good of the order before we get off? All right. We'll see everybody back on here at four forty-five.
But quickly, we could have sent out another invite for this afternoon? Or is it?
Zoom. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
But it's the same one. If we can log on to the same link or it's a totally different link.
I think it's a different afternoon link. I'll just ask Alyssa to send a new one right before it starts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.